Local control and local taxes. And when I got sent to the big house, I found out there was a lot of Republicans that don't care too much about local control. And they want to keep grabbing more power and lancing. And it's, I guess it's the nature of the beast. When you get in that position, you want to keep grabbing more and grabbing more. But local control is very important.
I agree wholeheartedly.
And somebody said to me once, well, local control can mess things up. I said, well, you're right, they can. But I said, you know, if Hillsdale County decides to do something and screws it up royally, the only people affected are the people in Hillsdale County. And I said, if the state of Michigan decides to do something and screws it up royally, the whole state's affected. And I said, heaven forbid, we get to the federal government and they try something and they screwed up, the whole country's affected. So I said, local control is better. Even if you mess up, you affect fewer people. So...
Good point.
They found that to be interesting.
Any other comments on correspondence? All right, moving along. Entertained motion to approve the regular agenda?
Some who support it.
Didn't support it. Any additions or corrections? And none, all those in favor of the regular agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Regular agenda is approved, and that brings us up to Mary Beth. Good morning.
Good morning.
And I believe you all got Mary Beth's report via email.
Good morning, Commissioners. I do have a couple of updates that I'd like to share with you. So in the packet, you'll see an update relative to our strategic plan. We actually tomorrow have a strategic summit with the board to evaluate our... We're in our third year, our first year of our three-year plan. So we're going to kind of evaluate where we are and make some decisions about if there's any modifications to our strategic plan. But you'll see an update in the report relative to that. Really, an important announcement to share is relative to what's called the Practice Transformation Academy. Without getting too far in the weeds, there's a partnership that's occurring with the National Council of Behavioral Health and the Community Mental Health Association. And they were requesting applicants from the 46 CMHs that might be interested to be a part of an academy that would actually move your organization forward relative to value-based contracting. And that's really the way healthcare is going. And we did submit an application with a focus on really partnering with our psychiatric inpatient local hospitals, both Hillsdale Hospital and with Henry Ford Allegiance. And we got notice last week that we were accepted as one of the participants in the academy. So we're excited about that because when you look at where healthcare is going, everything that we can do to ensure that we're on the forefront of that for this community is critical. So stay tuned, I guess, that it will start in... We should be hearing something anytime soon. It's an eight-month participation project. And it starts probably late August, early September. But that's an exciting thing for our community and for our partnership with Hillsdale Hospital as well as we look at ways to reduce emergency room costs. The other thing that I kind of wanted to give a couple of updates on is relative to partnerships and things that are occurring in Hillsdale County. So Hillsdale County ISD, all ISDs across the state of Michigan, were eligible for some funding for mental health supports and services in their districts. Hillsdale County, we partnered with them. We're utilizing a portion of the Hillsdale County Millage mental health dollars to be able to draw down... Our $40,000 contribution will actually draw down about $246,000 for Hillsdale County. And will allow us to do a couple of things. So the Hillsdale County ISD reached out to the schools. And the districts that are participating is Jonesville, Camden Frontier, Reading, Pittsburgh, and Waldron. And they will be doing a lot of preventative mental health education. Everything from mental health first aid to safe talk, which is a suicide awareness training, as well as the Handle With Care project. If you've heard of that, it started... It actually is a national program in which it started in Michigan, in Jackson County. And it's really expanded across the state. And what it is, it's really an exciting program because when a law enforcement officer comes across a child, say, it can be anything from a domestic abuse situation that occurred in the home. It could be something even more tragic, like a shooting. And a child, and a law enforcement officer will see a child that might be in the area. They reach out to the school, and all they tell the school is Handle With Care. They get the child's name, and the school knows that something happened. They don't know what happened. But they do know that something that this child was exposed to may cause the child, maybe the next day in class, or even a couple days later, to maybe be demonstrating some behaviors that may not be typical of that student. And it allows them to understand and have a framework of maybe something happened, and then be able to connect them with services, mental health services. So it's an exciting thing, and they're going to be looking at implementing that here in Hillsdale County. And then the other thing that I wanted to give an update on is we did this last quarter, since I reported last, we also utilized mental health dollars, Millage dollars, to provide law enforcement, some mental health first aid law enforcement. The other thing that we're doing is we continue to work with Judge Bianchi in the probate court to support them on the application for funding that's available for individuals who have appointed guardians who are CMH population. So the legislation did pass some funding. It's a statewide pool of dollars, but once the dollars are gone, they're gone. But we were working with them to ensure to get that, those forms up there so the county can receive some of, some dollars back relative to guardianship supports. I was trying to get an update about if we had heard anything yet, but I have not heard whether or not Hillsdale County actually was able to get some of those dollars back. I know they did what they needed to, to apply for it. The other exciting thing as it relates to the partnership with the Millage Dollars for Hillsdale Hospital and Lifeways is we have a care manager that we're hiring to help individuals who are in their hospital, and it isn't on their psychiatric ward, but they might be in primary, they might be there because they had a surgery, but they have a mental health issue. They want a care manager to coordinate and ensure that that person gets connected with follow-up care. So we have that position posted. They initially were going to hire. They were challenged with finding somebody, so they said, how about you guys look at hiring the individuals? So we have a position posted. I just noticed yesterday, we do have some applicants. So we're hopeful that we'll be able to fill that position and help the hospital. The other thing that we've put into play in Hillsdale Hospital is the, what we're calling ED sitter, if you will, that will be able to provide some peer-type support services for individuals who are in the ED who have been approved needing inpatient care, but we're challenged with trying to find a placement. I've talked a lot with you about that here, about the challenges statewide and even locally, where people are being boarded in the emergency department while we try to find placement. So this will lots of supports to the hospital while we're trying to find placement for that individual.
Are the supports in place?
Pardon?
Is that in place right now?
That's in place. There's a workflow that we've agreed to, and it's already in place. But the threshold is at 24 hours. So once somebody's been there at the 24-hour point, that this process kicks into play. And then the other final notice as it relates to the millages, it's taken us a little while because it's a little complicated. We've never been a beneficiary of mental health, of a millage before. And we wanted to make sure the process for supporting the Spark program with the transportation, that we had that correctly outlined so that there wasn't any risk for the county, for Spark, or for Lifeways. Our legal counsel has gotten back with us, and we know how to proceed moving forward relative to being able to transfer those funds for the purchase of a vehicle.
When will that happen?
My guess, it'll happen early this fall.
Early fall?
Early fall.
September?
Yeah. September, maybe late September. And then the only other thing at a statewide level to update you about is relative to the Section 298 pilots. You're probably tired of hearing me talk about that, but right now where the state is, it was supposed to start October 1st of this year, where they were going to work with three pilots in the state of Michigan for prioritizing the public mental health system. One of the CMHs pulled out of that pilot, so there's two remaining. Right now, the state has announced, I think it was within the last month, it might be a little over a month, that they are postponing the implementation until 2020, October 1st of 2020. So I guess we'll stay tuned as that moves forward. And, you know, as there's been a change in administration at the state level, we'll see what ends up happening. But that is my report. Is there any questions that you might have relative to anything that I covered or...
When does, the person you have on to jail, taking care of things out there, that grant runs out at the end of September that they're being paid with?
No, we're using the Millage Dollars to support...
You're using Millage Dollars for that. How is that working out?
I mean, I think it's worked... I'm not hearing, it's one of those things, I'm not hearing issues at my level, so I'm assuming...
No news is good news?
No news is good news, and it's going. They do have the support. There is a clinician, 40-hour clinician per week that's supporting the jail relative to individuals that are showing up that have mental health needs.
Sheriff Parker, how's it working out?
It's been exceptionally well considered. We have someone there 40 hours a week if she stays. And then we've not had problems calling someone back after hours when we need to. So it's been well.
Good. Excellent.
Any other questions for Mary Beth?
Mary Beth is going to be in Hillsdale twice next week to talk about the mental health Millage Dollars to the voters, to the taxpayers. She's coming to Rough Draft on Wednesday night at 6:00, and she's going to be on Facebook. Just, and then she's coming back again on Thursday night to the GOP meeting at 7:00 at Olivia's in Jonesville. So if someone just wants to hear her presentation, she's going to go on first. They could come and listen to that, and they could leave if they wanted to. But just to tell the taxpayers how much money we've taken in so far this year, what it's been spent on, and what her plans are for the rest of this year. We all know that up here because she reports to us all the time. But for the general taxpayer that hasn't heard, this will be two opportunities that she'll be in Hillsdale next week to report on how the money's been spent.
Good, good.
Thank you for doing that, Mary Beth.
Oh, no problem. You all have a good one.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along. Ken, you're up.
Thanks for having me here to go over the 2018 audit. Got some things to handle though. I've got some metrics at least the board I can hand to anybody in public that wants. Is that all right too? Or anybody wants to look at an extra?
This is my turn.
Yeah, that'd be fine, Ken.
You gave me three.
Everybody got one?
Ken, we also have one more. We have a Commissioner missing this morning.
We want his pass. All right. Got a few metrics I can leave here too. All right, so again, we've done the financial audit for 2018 for Hillsdale County. Again, the state of Michigan requires annually that they want accounting of all your financial records and make sure that they're highly accurate as well as following all the rules and you follow the different practice, best practices and term controls recommended by the state. And make sure you're able to provide accurate financial statements and give a good accounting of where you're at. So then at the end of that, we give an opinion. And we always say there's the four, there's the adverse, which is the bad or the ugly one that means that there were issues or discrepancies. There's a disclaimer when there isn't information to hang your hat on to prove something. And then there's a modified, which usually means maybe an item or two are incorrect or unprovable. But the rest of the stuff, all the information is sound. And then there's the unmodified, meaning as far as the presentation of all your financial statements and you're following the rules and the common principles, everything goes down accurately and it should be. So for 18, you got the unmodified, so the highest opinion possible. Next, we'll get into the graphs that I handed up to kind of show all the finances there for 2018. And like Kenny who've done in the past, we prepare this year and last year and kind of talk about what's changed and what's gotten exciting. So the first page is about all the assets for the entire county. And we had the cash investments get a bit stronger from about 17.2 million to 8.9. And the largest part of that increase was the medical care facility. Their cash got quite a bit stronger for 2018. The rest of the county's stuff kind of was a little bit more comparable. Some slight increases here and there. But for most of that was just the cash investments of the MCF, even better. Receivable stayed pretty even, and those were all the accounts receivable at the medical facility for patients. There's taxes receivable, loans receivable, all the same. That was almost pretty much dead even. Prepaid items, 408,000 down a little bit from 559. Prepaid items are things like insurance, liability insurance, some insurances that are paid into the future. So it's not that it gets all expensed, some of it benefits the next year. So it carries over as an asset and gets used in that subsequent year. Also, you can have like maintenance contracts, service contracts that benefit into the future as well. So those kind of get treated as an asset at the end of the year and then utilized the following year. Then one of the biggest areas for the county, like most counties, you have capital assets, which is all the land, the buildings, all the equipment, police cars, heavy equipment that's used to provide services for the citizens. That went from about 18 to what, 17, almost 18 million, so pretty close. But probably the slight decrease is just from depreciation of all those assets. I think we had a few additions, but not even too major this year. Like no big building construction or improvements for 18. And then there's deferred outflows, landing at 677,000 off of 237. Deferred outflows, then you'll see on the next page, the deferred inflows. And those run with the pension liability and the OPEB liability that are, I liken them to like deferred gains and losses relating to that. The actuarial companies, they figure it into it, but they don't, they defer it because they don't feel it's going to hit the bottom line of meaning the liabilities for the pension and OPEB. They feel that these things are either benefit or hurt it, but they need to be kind of charged over, you know, two to three, five years, something like that. So they're held in these deferred accounts and then written off over the period that they think it affects and that they be an actuarial company. So the second page, and now we're kind of tied on all the liabilities in the county. And also its net position, which is its net worth, if you use fund balance. So accounts payable, pretty comparable, 3.1 million for both years. Those different vendors of the county. And accrued expenses are under due, like accrued salaries and payroll taxes and those things. Under revenue, pretty close, 2,000 for like different grants and things that are received as cash at the end of the year, but they're not actually spent or used, so they get thrown into the under category until they are used. Then there's OPEB liability, which for you guys fortunately went down this year from 2.3 million to 1.5. And OPEB went through a re-haul this year for 2018. The liability used to be calculated on the basis of what the actuarial companies would kind of look at, who's getting this benefit and the benefits for retiree healthcare. It can be some other things too, like GM does legal counsel for people if they... Like GM does legal counsel for people if they want, but healthcare is always a big thing and that's what you have here. So they would look at, you know, what you're promising to give, the time value of money, all these things to kind of calculate what the obligation is for Hillsdale County in the future. And then they present, try to present value that back in the days' dollars to give you an idea of what, you know, what the obligation is. And then they look at if there's any assets in the plan and all those things. And under the old rules of accounting for OPEB, they would come up with an annual amount they thought you need to put in each year to be able to make sure it's funded, so you can pay those benefits as they come due. And what was, what's different is they would not only think about the payments or premiums are for people currently retired that are getting the healthcare, but they would also look at the people that are younger, that are still working and may not retire for years. But they would look at those people and throw them in too and say, okay, we need to put money aside to make sure they get that benefit or there's money building up for them too. So when the time comes, they have it. So they would come up with a contribution amount each year and then they would compare that to what you actually paid in. Like most counties, Hillsdale just pays the current retirees, which is what they call is the pays-as-you-go system. Meaning you just pay the people currently getting the benefit that need to get it. The people that are working that won't get it for 20, 30 years, like most governments, we're not, we're not setting money aside for them yet because you don't have to. You could if you wanted to, but that's another discussion. So under the old rules, they were just taking the difference between what they thought you should put in each year versus what you actually did. And if there was a shortfall, like you guys had, like most counties and cities have, they would treat that as a liability building up for the difference. Now, in 2018, OPEB liability is accounted for just like the pension liability. They want to take just what assets you have for it and they want to take what they think the realistic liability is in today's dollars. And then, you know, the difference is what they think that liability is. So it's, I guess, more of a true picture of where the OPEB obligation is now versus a difference in between what they thought should be put in versus what you were. But I think, you know, based on restructuring and some maybe tweaking, that OPEB liability for you guys isn't quite as significant for some counties that are, you know, that let everybody in it and that are still doing it for everybody. And it could be a lot bigger obligation. Obviously, your healthcare is, you know, uncontrollable and the expenses and the premium increases, all those things are, you know, so high and can really make this liability increase, you know, each year if you're not careful. So that was a change. Long-term liabilities went down, which is 11 to 10.7. And that includes all of your bonds and those pay of all the debt of the county. So I think we didn't have any new debt other than maybe some capital leases for some, I guess, some equipment or patrol cars. I guess it wasn't much, like 75 grand. Otherwise, we just had a lot of debt paid down this year, which is a good thing, so that went down. The pension liability went up from 3.2 to 3.6 million. And again, so that is comparing the assets for the plan versus what they think the liability is in today's dollar for that. And then what hurt it this year is in December, the stock market, you know, took a terrible step backwards and happened for everybody in the state and all over the United States. So we had kind of a step back for the pension liability. It went up because the assets were devalued. But again, it's not something that happens forever. In March, the stock market recovered. They probably got back to a better place by the end of March, so. But that's the stock market, always going up and down. Otherwise, I think you guys are doing, you know, quite a few good things. You're making additional payments in there, trying to get that kind of to a better place. You know, I think you also offer a defined contribution plan, so you kind of diversify yourself on that front. So it's not as bad as a lot of counties that that's all they have is a defined benefit plan for everybody and everybody's in it. So it can be, you know, a bigger liability for most than what you guys have here. But the takeaway too, I always say with the pension liability is when they wanted to start putting this on the audit, they kind of wanted us to be able to see it and keep track and see how it's doing each year versus the old way. It was always in the footnotes and, you know, you kind of would lose track of it and how it's doing. You know, now they kind of want to put it up front there and they want to give you the information so you can manage it. You know, we get the questions like some people want to try to be fully funded, some people want to get things too expensive and, you know, try to do different plans like the defined contribution. You know, but it's kind of, it's probably not an easy fix, but takes a lot of research on you guys' part, kind of looking at different options and just trying to manage that so you can, I guess, offer these benefits out of track to keep employees, but still be able to afford them and make sure you can provide them when the time comes. So, you know, making extra premiums is a good thing. You know, some counties, a couple of counties that have taken out debt to try to, you know, pay or catch up to make sure it's fully funded. One this year took about 11 million, but still the stock market went backwards, so it's still putting back 3 million. So even, you know, they thought they would catch up by doing that, but the stock market, you can still have these changes. So there's not a silver bullet per se of taking this thing out and making sure that it's funded and no worries moving forward. There's always things that can change, so it's, you know, just something you got to watch and try to manage within your means and make sure that, you know, when the time comes, I think the, you know, the big thing is make sure that people get their pension check when they retire, whether it's, you know, next year or 20, 30 years, so. So it's just something that's got to be managed and, again, make sure that's something you guys can actually afford to do. I was talking about one of the townships in the upper peninsula. The supervisor used to be the chief of police for the city of Detroit, you know, they went bankrupt. And he was saying how he got, they had the option of getting out of the defined benefit plan for the city back in the 80s and he did and he got something else and he's saying, so glad I did because those guys that are still in that defined benefit plan after they went bankrupt and restructured, they don't know when they're getting their check. Every month's a different story. Maybe they get it next month, nope, or somehow in proportion. So like for the city of Detroit, you know, they didn't have this information back then and know where they're at. Even when they were in bankruptcy, they didn't know, you know, what this obligation was or what they're promising to do. So it's kind of, you know, this is a kind of a thing you need to try to watch and make sure that you're taking all the parameters and things and doing the best you can with it, I guess. Like I said, then the deferred inflows are kind of like a deferred gain that go with it that are written off over time. You have the last three bars of equity of the county. And the biggest kind of net worth or net position thing you have is your investment in all those capital assets, like land, buildings and equipment, pretty clear of debt. So that's all those hard assets that are pretty clear of debt that you actually own. Then there's restricted equity, which is any type of fund program that's grant-funded or paid for by a millage or some kind of specific restricted funding thing. If there's anything left at the end of the year or any surplus, that's got to be put in this restricted bucket and make sure that it keeps getting used for only that activity moving forward, whether it's like road patrol or like a public safety millage or something. It can't be used for general purposes. If that money was, you know, levied for a particular purpose or grant or something, that's what's going to be moving forward and used for that, put in that bucket. Then the last category is the unrestricted, which got a bit stronger this year, went from about 3.3 to 5.4. And I think largely because of your OPEB liability, the change in accounting, it going down obviously would shift your net position the other way too, so you don't have quite as much of an obligation for OPEB anymore. That frees up your equity in other areas for general, so that is an improvement.
Next is-
Ken, on page two, the net position that you've got there for 17 and 18, how is that figured? That doesn't come from the two numbers that are up above. You've got total liabilities, 19 million, deferred inflows, 2.5 million, net position, 17.6. How does that number get put together?
Comes from, we go to the hard copy, the hard copy of the audit. So we go to page eight of the hard copy and this is for the, for everything of the county, all of its government funds and business funds, which the MCF is included in the business funds. Total is 17,660,893 and so that's the whole shooting match.
Okay.
So then within that-
Comes from P V. That's all I need. Thank you.
That's where we break it down.
Thanks.
No problem. So page three graphs, next we go to the general fund and looking at the revenues. And things are pretty comparable between years, so not any takeaways by the state or any changes. Your tax base looks like it's a little bit better. You went from almost 6.4 million to tax revenues about 6.5. Enter governmental revenues, where all the federal, state, local grants stayed pretty level at about 2.3 million. The licenses and permits stayed pretty close around 50,000 and those are the different permits for things received by the clerk's office. Turned out, like dob licenses, marriage licenses, pistol licenses by the sheriff, kind of examples of some of the big ones. Fines and forfeits from the, collected by the courts was about 321,000, down about 3 grand from last year. Charged for services was up from 993 to about 142. Those are the fees charged by the various departments of the county for those things they provide, like the registered deeds, tester fees, the clerk's office, treasurer's office in different areas for the work they do that are charged to the public user. So those were probably about 140,000 better this year. Reimbursements, refunds, stayed pretty level. And examples of those, are any time you get reimbursements for services or if you get refunds for the courtman's comp, insurances, other insurances that goes in there. And then last, we have interest of rentals, like about 255,000. And that's the smaller part importantly is the interest earned on the cash investments, which like most governments and the states have been kind of not as raised as it used to be back in the 90s. And then you also get rental money for renting different things in the county buildings and such. It's probably a large piece of that. Page four now, we have expenses of just the general fund, showing some of the legislative, judicial, general government, public safety, public works, health and welfare, other expenses, capital level A. And I think we had some different things allocated to the legislative category this year. Moved from, I think, the, I believe the other category that got reassigned. So overall, it's probably closer. But sure, your expenses kind of are staying pretty level, which is good considering your revenues streams are also pretty level. So you're using what you have and managing it and spending it within your means. So that's what you hope to see at the end of the day. And of course, examples of those categories, had judiciars, all the courts of the county, general governments, things like treasurer's office, clerks, registered deeds, elections, equalization, billing and grounds, name of your- Public safety, the sheriff's office, jail, road patrol, public works usually. Some of the drain commission expenses go there, health of all affairs for things like appropriations of mental health, the health department, medical examiners, those things. And then capital levels, about capital equipment of the fund. Then your debt services, different small loans, I think you guys have the equipment. That's been averaging about $2,700 for the last couple of years.
So what's other?
Other in the general fund are appropriations and also the fringes of the employees. Things like the, like the medical and pension and all the related fringe costs. And there's something else too. Now that is the most commonly asked question, always I have these, what is any other? That's a good question. Oh, property liability insurance is also in there. That's about 252,000. About a million and a half is employee benefits, 100,000 appropriations and then some other expenses that are much of slightly smaller things, about 233,000.
Is it on a specific page?
Yes, page 53. It shows the breakdown of other expenses in the general fund. Moving on, then on page five, we have all the government funds, which is the general plus the special funds, debt service and capital level funds. And that also shows the tax revenues, the intergovernmental, licenses and permits, contributions, fines, charges for services. So the revenues were pretty consistent across all the government funds. It looks like things are pretty stable on that front. Other revenues got a little bit better, 1.3 million, about from 993,000. So that's a good indicator on that front. The page following, page six, so the expense amount of all those government funds. Again, it's legislative, judicial, general government, public safety, public works, health and welfare, back in culture. Back in culture usually carries things like the parks, as well as libraries and things like that. Other, you know, capital level A and then debt service. So we have more debt service funds to pay for the different abilities and things for the county. And that was about 1.2 million and that's broken down between principal and interest on that debt. So no big fluctuations. And the last graph is the fund balance for the general fund. And we had a decrease this year. We had about a million 501 at the beginning and at the end of 2017. And in 18, we're at about 1,403,556. So we had a less than $100,000 decrease in fund balance this year. And you're still within the limits of the floor that we like to see. There's not a law or a rule of what fund balance you got to keep or like a level or ceilings and floors. They do recommend a floor, they being Government Finance Officers Association of the United States. They recommend a floor of, don't go below 10% to 15% of next year's budgeted expenditures and transfers out. And I think you guys landed this year at about 12% or something like that. So you're not below the 10%, so you're still probably in a safe place. But, and two, your trend, as you can see over the last five years, you kind of had, some years you've gone down, some years you rebounded. So you're not having three years in a row where you've gone down. Because once you do that, the state checks out a letter saying, hey, you've had three years in a row that you've had losses in your general fund. Really worried about you guys. What's going on? What are you guys trying to do to do things differently, to save money or get additional money? Not that they'll help you or just give you anything, but they'll just tell you that, hey, we're watching, we're concerned. And I've got a few clients that have gotten that letter over the last few years. And then there's things you can point out to their attention, like if you have a lot of fund balance, like maybe you're over the 15%, you say, well, that's true, we've had some reductions, but we still have a lot of fund, a lot of reserves at the end of the day. So we think we're okay. Or some counties too will kind of use their fund balances as savings. As they get ready to do maybe some bigger projects, like renovate the building, add a roof on or something like that. Instead of all the time to borrow money, you can kind of build up a savings to just pay for it when the time comes with cash and not have to take out debt and cover all those costs. So you can see, you know, some governments, they have a few, it builds up, kind of gets above that floor. And then they, you know, they've anticipated their five-year cap, like, hey, we've got to do all this stuff. So they build it up and then use it that fourth year and do those renovations and then the fund actually goes down. So it's, it kind of depends on what your plan, do we have to have like a five-year plan and what, you know, you need the money for and what your plans are. So, you know, I think as long as you have a plan and you're kind of being followed, you're okay. So, and again, as long as you don't get below that 10% floor, I think you're doing okay at the end of the day. So, questions on the graphs or any of the topics or anything?
Go ahead, Bruce.
Well, on the hard copy, commissioners, page four, up the top, there's three bullet points. At the general fund, as you can see, the fund balance went down about 95,000. But that was because of that $150,000 payment we made to the pension fund. If we hadn't done that, we'd have had a surplus of 55,000. And I think that's a real credit to Derek for getting the budget that close. That's, he's been after whatever budget we put together with accurate. And we're not going to have huge surpluses or huge deficits at the end of the year. And I think he accomplished that with this year's budget. Now Ken, over on page six in the hard copy, the legislative expenses. In 17, we're 72,000 and in 18, we're 225,000. Now I take it that the legislative is us, the commissioners?
Yes, and there's usually some other things that go there too.
I think that's where the $150,000 contribution of Mary's got put.
That's where that got put?
Probably should have went into public safety for future reference for myself, but it-
So just to make it clear to the general public, that legislative branch is us. That's where the $150,000 contribution to the pension fund got placed in the budget, right? Okay, all right. Then the next question- Then the next question, or the next point I want to make is for the medical care. And Ken mentioned this earlier. They've done a fantastic job out there in the last four years getting things turned around. And their quality has gone up. Their money that they're making is going up, which allows them to reinvest in capital improvements and so on. So that's a really positive thing.
I always like to make the point with the medical care facility across the state, they're always in a bad spot because of all this Medicare reform. You know, they always talk about, when all that reform started happening with President Clinton and then President Obama, and then also the Republican presidents kind of let it happen too along the way. But they really took a hard look at those Medicare reimbursements. And they actually hired consulting firms to do audits of it. And they would go back five years and look at all the claims submitted and all these, you know, the plans of care that the doctors are saying these people needed. And they would rip those apart and they would come back and deny them. Say, well, they didn't really need that. They didn't need, you know, 20 businesses this month. They probably need, we think they needed one. And the way this, they're funding is the federal government with this Medicare, they can go back and take money back out of their account. And they're always, you know, they'll come back five years later and say, wow, you guys owe us this money. So they're, I always give them guys credit because they really got it beyond their game as far as making sure they're billing everything in the right category, you know, making sure they've got all their documentation. Because, you know, as I said, their people are looking at these and they've got, they're constantly fighting to keep their position and make sure that things are done correctly. And they are getting what they're owed. So it's a rough area and I wouldn't...
Ken, on page 11, has to do with the senior citizen center. Now Ken, I'm taking it from this, that the taxes receivable, 1.288 million. That's what they get from both villages?
Right.
Okay. I want to make sure down in liabilities, it says accounts payable, 850,000. What are they paying on the building, the debt on the building? Where's that at in here? Is that, that's not that 850,000?
No, because it's a government fund. With fund accounting, all they ever focus on are what they call current assets and current liabilities.
I don't care about all that. Where is it that they're paying on the millage?
That is included. Look at the footnote, it's on page... Page 34.
Page 34?
Believe the 2015 senior center debt. So that 850,000 is the amount outstanding.
So where on page 34 is the amount that they're paying?
Okay, so then we would go to page 37. And it shows under primary government, government activities, bond, general obligation bonds. It would show that it started here with, and these are all of them, not just the senior centers. Started out with 7.5, paid off 730 down to...
Where's the senior center?
Their debt is within the general obligation bonds line.
So it's not broken out?
Right.
So we don't know how much they're paying. Derek?
Ken, on page 13?
Page 13?
The revenue, yeah. The senior center debt service, principal payment, 280,000. Is that what you looked at?
Yep, yes, that we gave it to you, page 13.
So they're paying 280,000 principal and 41,000 of interest. All right, so commissioners, if we take that number, 320,000, and we go back to page 11. The bottom line is, is the senior center on the two villages is bringing in 1,288,995 dollars. And for the bonds themselves, for the two bonds out there, the two buildings that they put up, they're spending 320,000. So the remainder, or the difference in that, which is about a million bucks, okay? They're using for services. I've asked that question in the past and never got an answer. Okay, it's a reason I'm bringing it up. So just for your information, so we got revenue and we got bond expense. And we've talked in the past and we've encouraged them to do what we're trying to do. And that's put money aside for capital improvements, okay? They've got a million dollars of that bond money to play with. Part of that could be put into capital improvements. Now, obviously, services are important. But just so you know in your mind, the amount of money that we're talking about, okay? Thank you. Ken, my next question is on page 15. You've got business activities, enterprise funds, and you've got a section that says non-major funds. What's that?
So under the rules of how we have to do these other reports, the funds that are, it's basically in size of 10% or greater of the total, get to be on this page 15 as being what they call the major or big funds. So the medical is really huge, it's one. These others, delinquent tax funds are one. So then they require us to put the smaller ones that are under that 10 or 5% that they, how they calculate it, back on, I'll tell you, page...
56.
56.
56?
Actually, the enterprise ones start on a little bit further. Page 64. And they do this with the government funds too. They put the heavy hitters up front, then they do a non-major column and put...
So those are, okay, then these are just all the small funds that the treasurer's office has? It could be delinquent tax funds, it could be other funds, but all the little dinky funds that they give us a report once a year on?
Smaller ones, yeah.
Okay, so that's all treasurer's, treasurer funds?
And there's the billing inspection in there and the GIS.
Yeah.
Otherwise, all the detailed, like the tax ones.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next question is on page 30. Up top, it says receivables. And it says, the footnote underneath the numbers, of the amounts reported for receivables above leases, receivable in the amount of 1,535,000 are not expected to be collected within one year. What do we have, what are you talking about here specifically?
I think there's a lease to repay the debt for the senior center debt service. I think...
So this is debt service?
Right, so the debt service, the county's paying the debt for those bonds. But then there's an agreement with the senior center to pay that, to reverse the counter for that debt service, the principal and the interest.
All right, and then at the bottom of that same page, tax abatements. That $20,186, which is the total there, that's the, is that the amount of money the county is losing based upon all the tax abatements that have been given?
I'm sorry, what page are you on?
Page 30.
Okay.
The very bottom.
The very bottom, $20,186.
You are correct.
Is that, am I correct on that?
Yep, that's what this footnote is to say, is to show, like, based on giving those abatements.
And again, commissioners, it's just for your knowledge as to the amount of money. You know, we talk about economic development and give them tax abatements and so on and so forth. That's what it's costing the county, okay? It's not good or bad, I just wanted to point it out to you.
And this footnote is just showing the county taxes. It also affects, you know, with the cities in there, the schools and whoever else is, you know, part of the abatements. But this is supposed to just show what it affects the county.
Okay, then on page 34, the long-term debt right there in the middle with capital improvement, senior center refunding, they owe 970,000. And then on the other one, the other millage, they've got 2015 senior center capital debt, 850,000. So there's the 1.7, 1.8 million dollars that they still owe over the course of the next number of years, okay? Now, clearly at the bottom of the page 34, Ken, you've got, at December 31st, 2018, the county's legal debt limit was 184 million? You're telling me that's how far we could go in debt?
Yep, that's the rule.
That's the rule, but that seems to me a rather stupid rule.
Yes, yeah, there's pretty much no way to kind of not, you know, to not go over it when they make it that high. That's what it is. 10% of your state equalized value is what they'll let you do. Really, usually really a high number, you'll never...
Don't get ideas, Wiley. All right, then on page 35. The energy and efficiency improvements, up the top, energy efficiency improvements at the sheriff's office. The maturity date is this year, so I believe we pay off that debt this year.
In 18?
I just want to remind you, commissioners, that that money that we'll be saving there will then be put towards this building. Because right now, all we're paying is interest on this building. So that will not be free money that'll show up. That's going to turn right around and go towards paying the debt off on this building, 500,000 that we owe, okay? And then the annex project, which is a building across the way, we owe this year 19 and then 20. So in three years, that'll be paid off. And those monies right now that are coming to us are coming from the treasurer's office through the delinquent tax fund, current every year. So that's where that money's coming from. So again, when that money comes available, the annex project in three years, then that money will be money that potentially could be freed up, but it might not be money that we get from the treasurer's office, okay? That might not translate to the general fund, so you can't count on that actually being there, okay? Okay, Ken, my next question is on page 40. If we go all the way to the bottom of page 40, we see the make-believe assumptions for our pension fund, right? Okay? And interestingly enough, I just got a deal from Edward Jones the other day on investments that I have with them. And over the course of the last 10 years, the investments have earned 6.25%, not 7.75, okay? And the other thing that's really going to hit hard with pension funds is that the interest rates, things are starting to slow down. They're talking about interest rates going backwards again. They've already started coming back down. And the belief is that before we're done, if we have another recession, that the Federal Reserve is actually going to create what are known as negative interest rates. So in other words, you will pay to have your money in the bank or you will pay to hold a bond. I'm serious. They did this in Europe back about five years ago. And it could very well happen here, you know, to try to juice up the economy. Okay, now the other, on page 41, if you turn the page, our total pension liability, and Ken pointed this out, went from, this is towards the bottom. The balance in 17 was 8,300,000. The balance in 18 was 8,600,000, 656,000. And that's after we put that 150,000 in. So the pension liability still went up $300,000, even though we dumped in 150,000. That's the problem we got, okay? Then on page 42, and we've talked about, and we've got our actuarial study coming up. But we talked up towards the top. You can see that if, if we assume a rate of, investment rate of 7% rather than where we're at, our pension liability would be 4.8 million, 4,784,000. Right now, it's about 3,689,000. But with a more accurate assumption, you can see what happens to our deficit. It skyrockets. So that 1% makes a little bit over a million dollars difference, okay? On page 45, you can see that the road commission has got a similar kind of problem with their pension liability. It's going up towards the top of the page. At a discount rate of 8%, it's 4.5 million. It goes to 7%, it's 5.7 million. And they've dumped a lot of money in over the years to their pension fund to try to keep it up, but they got the same problem. Now, the other thing I want to point out is on page 46. And Ken mentioned to us that we have an OPAP liability. That's our healthcare for our retirees of 1,581,000. Now, right now, we have two members, correct Derek?
Yes.
That are drawing healthcare on their retirement. Because they have to pay half the cost, we pay the other half. We've got two people. But under the state assumptions, you can see that we have 34 active members. We have to assume that all 34 of those are going to use the healthcare. And that's what creates that one and a half, 1.6 million dollar deficit. And the state's not going to let us out of that, okay? So even though we know almost all of them won't take it, okay? The state's saying, we still got to have that on our books. Derek?
All right, just quick clarification. The actuary that we got actually only assumes 60% of eligible employees.
Okay, so they're going to assume 60% of them, which would be 20, okay? Right now, we only have two out of all the retirees, all right? So keep that in mind as we go forward as well. And then, Ken, on page 49, up at the top, all the way up to the top is the service cost. Is that the amount of money that we're being charged by MERS to administer our program?
It's in there, but it's not, it's not all of it.
It's not all of it?
Right, it's the other, other costs of providing the retirement plan.
How do we find out all of it that we're being charged? Besides asking them, which tends to create a Texas two-step dance?
So I think even the actuarial doesn't really give a lot of information on what the breakdown is. I don't know, but you see any Derek in there?
I'll go through it again to see what kind of breakdown they give for service costs. But yeah, I'll pop in ahead, I'm not sure.
I mean, it is largely, I guess, their cost. Because as you see, the rest of the things, like the benefit payments are people actually getting the pension money out. Interest is a big component of what interest needs to be growing on. So what's left is the service, will be all the administration fees in the plan. You know, whether what they want to call it, it's what they think they need.
So you, as our auditor, have no way of telling us, based upon the information given to you, what their total cost to us is?
Right, all we get is their report and relying on their expertise as being an actuarial under the US Actuarials Association.
Okay, well, one of the things, the reason I bring this up, commissioners, is when we talk later about whether or not we want to pull out of this and go somewhere else, we need to know what their total cost is so we can compare it to other plans that we might be interested in doing. And the point I want to make is, they've been with us for a lot of years and never once have we seen the total cost of them administering our plan. And so I would suggest that we write them a letter. And I know, because I said this, I'm going to have to do it, but write them a letter and ask them specifically, what are the total costs, all costs, everything, for you to administer our plan, to send out checks, to do the whole bit? Because I don't think we've ever seen that before, I don't believe.
I thought we agreed to a percentage. I thought like...
Not as far as cost administration of the plan.
Okay.
The percentage we put in, we agreed to...
But not...
Last bargaining session, but the administrative costs. And actually, my understanding, which is not reflected here, my understanding was the administration costs should have gone down. Because last bargaining session, we combined, there was two plans out there and we combined them to one plan, which means they're only administering one plan now.
And it's continued to go up?
Yeah, so that's not indicative of what my understanding was when we had a, kind of a discussion with them, so to speak, last bargaining session.
Okay, Ken, do you have any thoughts on it?
Well, I was just looking at, I'm looking something on there. So the definition of it is it represents the projected benefit to our employees. Service cost refers to the required amount. Each employer must subside each year to cover employees' pension benefit costs. So it's basically to recognize that expense each year as determined by the actuarial company. So it's, how do I say this? It's truly supposed to recognize what promising to give that benefit, the true cost of it is each year. And that's what they mean by service cost. So it wouldn't only be the administrative cost by MERS, but also making sure that you're, have an idea of what the cost is to promise, that you're promising to give these people what that cost is. And so you know what you need to put in to pay for it. So it's kind of everything by definition.
But is that, so does that make it more of an assumption than an actual?
Yes, there's really a lot of assumptions and estimates that go into that.
Okay. Okay, but we, here's the thing I've been frustrated with. We send them X dollars.
Right.
They take out of there, by the end of the day, I don't care what name you give it, they take out of there Y dollars. And we're left with Z dollars to actually invest and earn interest on, and so on and so forth. How much is the Y dollars that they're taking out?
They are audited by Plan Ram, MERSes, so you can request their whole audit, and then that gets divvied between all the...
If we send them a letter explaining it in simple terms like I just did, do they have to tell us?
I think so, otherwise, you know, why are you doing business with them?
Worth a try?
It's, it's worth a try, but I don't think that they're gonna... It's worth a try, but I, I don't think they're going to be forthright, I don't think they're gonna...
We, we asked, when this other lawyer came down, and we met with him, and he said to us, I remember him saying to us, "You need to find out the total cost of your expenses with MERS before you make the decision on whether to move to a different plan, so that you can talk about total costs to them."
Right.
And so I was hoping that when your audit came through, and then I saw the service costs, I thought, well, that's got me all titillated, but you're telling me that's not the total amount that they're taking out?
No.
Okay, Julie, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just confused, so, in our arrangement with, uh, ICMARC, I just have to read it off the thing, um, that's a specific percentage, like they agreed to charge us 1.25% or something like that on that account. We don't have that same type of agreement with MERS, okay?
What about getting a copy in their audit? Can we do that?
Well, you can get a copy of their audit, but it isn't going to do us any good, because it's not going to show what we're taking out of ours, because they might take less out of somebody else's percentage-wise.
Yes, they specifically have a Hillsdale County page, you know?
I mean, they might have some, you know, some information that can break that out for you guys, but there's probably 80 counties in it, 200 cities, 300 townships, you know, all these other road commissions, there's so many.
We would...
They're the biggest game out there by far.
Okay, alright, I'll, I'll work on that. This doesn't give me the answer though, right?
Right.
Okay, page 51. Derek and I estimated for personal property tax reimbursement, it's up towards the top, second line under intergovernmental. And Ken, maybe you can help us out here. A year ago, we received from the state of Michigan, just a minute, I got the numbers here, I even wrote them down. We received from the state of Michigan in 2017, I think it was about 292,000 dollars for our personal property tax reimbursement. Yes, 292,000.
Right.
In 2018, commissioners, we received 69,000. We lost, when you go through all the gobbledygook of this thing, our revenues were down, and 200,000 of it, 230,000 of it was because of this reduction that the state gave us for personal property tax revenues. Remember when they're going to pay all the personal property tax? Now, I went and talked to, uh, Nick, and I said, "Explain to me how this is supposed to work." And what he did was, he gave me some information that indicated that we have about 47 million dollars of personal property tax that's eligible to be reimbursed. However, a chunk of that, a significant chunk of it, about half of it, is going directly to the TIFAs and the DDAs and so on, because they captured that tax, so that reimbursement's going to them. And so, according to what Nick explained to me, and he's going to give me more specific numbers, we as a county should be receiving somewhere between 110,000 and 165,000 each year. Now, first year it was 292, that ain't between 110 and 165. The next year was 69, that ain't between 110 and 165. So Ken, how in the name of heaven are us poor yokels in Hillsdale County supposed to figure out what the state's going to give us when we put our budget together for next year? Because I don't want a 200,000 hour shortfall in our revenue again. Can you help us at all understand what's going on?
All I have so far with that is a phone number from Department of Treasury, there's a certain department that's supposed to help you estimate it better. I, I think what's changed is initially, they seemed to give one big lump sum, and maybe that was supposed to be straddle a couple of years, but they didn't give any detail in the, in the check saying that. You know, then like you said, the next payment, next year the payment's lower, and then Derek was saying, "Now you're getting a payment in May," which before, you always got a one, big one at the end of the year. So, I don't know what, and you, were you saying Nick, is he talking about the state treasurer?
No, Nick is our equalization...
Oh, okay, okay.
Well, can you send that phone number and the magic name of the magic person who knows everything about this?
Allegedly.
To Derek?
Yes, I sure will.
And then we'll, we'll get ahold of them and go from there.
And I know originally, the state sent out a form, this is what I'm telling Derek, well, four or five years ago, they, they did a form, because all this came about when, when they took this personal property taxes and restructured that, and said, "Well, okay, uh, public safety was going to lose because of this." And what this was all supposed to do was cut, was try to provide them, the counties relief in our county, all the cities, everybody's public safety, uh, a way to make up for that loss of funding, because now it's coming from the state. And originally, they did a form, I don't know, three pages, and they kind of took the public safety expenses, like, uh, sheriff, ambulance, maybe fire, some of those things, and they looked at, okay, these are the expenses, you know, over the last three years to operate it. Show us also the revenues that are totally dedicated for those things, like, are you getting certain grants, do you have millages for like, uh, maybe, uh, policing or some of these things? And they, they would have you fill all this out, send the form in, and that supposedly was what they were basing your payments on, so they kind of would help you make up for what you lost. And I know, you know, first were people were like saying, "We got this form," and it didn't correlate to what people ended up getting, or it didn't, it didn't make any sense to, but that's kind of what they wanted to get to kind of judge them what they should give it out to everybody based on. And I remember everybody's asking, and then I asked...
So the first year, they may have been over generous.
I'm thinking so.
Okay. And they didn't tell us we were being over generous. So when we put the budget together for this year, that's a major mistake, okay? And it's on our part, but if you look at what we estimated we were going to take in, it was actually less than what we took in the year before.
Yeah.
It just wasn't enough less, so we ended up 230,000 short.
And I think your point about the TIFAs, in the, in that first year, I don't remember them saying that had to be allocated. It seemed like it was going right to the general fund for public safety things, and now, you're right, it's getting some of the DDA, is, you know, and there's a whole myriad of TIFAs, shopping districts, all those things are capturing it.
Yep.
So it's getting spread more too.
So we'll find out. We'll look into that, and when we get something figured out, Derek and I, then we'll get back with you, okay?
But I'll, I'll...
Now, on page 53 is the other, is the good thing, because remember, we're 230,000 short now on revenue because of this. But if you look on page 53 at the bottom, total expenditures, and you look, the total expenditures for the years, now this is our elected officials, our department heads, everybody, was 293,000 less than what we had budgeted for.
Yep.
So because of their frugality, and watching the pennies, and so on and so forth, okay? We ended up actually about 60,000 to the good, right? Which is exactly where we ended up. So it could have been a whole lot worse than it was with this mistake we made, but we'll make sure that next year, and we got to remember this year as well, I think we got in the budget for this year, don't we have about 200,000 again for that personal property tax, Derek?
Yeah, and, you know, the most frustrating part is I pulled those estimates from the state website, and every time I go back, there's different sheets up there with different estimates changing it.
Shocking, shocking.
But, you know, with, with revenue sharing, they told me the same thing. It used to be these things, they tried to correlate it to, you know, some kind of formula, so you could see, well, this is why, how, and what to expect. But the state now kind of says these things are more like an appropriation, which is subject to what they think they can give you, based on how things are going for them. So that plays into these things now, so if they're having a rough year, they may, "Oh, we just don't have it."
We're going to get short it.
Right.
Okay. And we need to remember that, commissioners, okay? As a superintendent of Pittsford, I made the comment that, back in the 90s, when the money was flowing in like crazy, I said, "Well, this is really nice right now," but I said, "As soon as things get tight," I said, "We're going to get cut off, because they're going to take care of themselves first." And that's exactly what happened in the school aid fund when the 2000s hit, so. Now we need to buckle up our belts and hang on, because if things head south, we're going to get, we're going to get zapped.
And now we've got to fix all the roads in the state, so.
Okay, then the final question I have is on page 56, and I, no, I've got a couple more after this, I don't want to disappoint Ruth. Um, page 56, am I correct, as we look through all of these parks, ambulance, all these different special revenue funds, the number at the bottom, is that the amount of money that's sitting in that fund as of the end of 18?
Not the very bottom, but the total fund balances line is...
One up from the bottom.
Right.
Okay.
Is what's remaining, and it's not only cash, to be in truth, but it's, it can be other assets, like receivables.
Okay, so we have...
Which we have, so turning to cash.
The biggest one is, as you can all see, is 911 emergency. Well, that's not ours. That's, we're keeping the numbers for it, but that belongs to Mr. Sanford. Friend of the Court, you can see that's got a chunk in there, and if you remember, that's the money that we were told we could take, and we took, and then we were told we couldn't take it, so we took it back, okay? That's got a pretty good chunk. But also remember, that money is going to pay for what the state insisted we spend more, that's going to come out of that fund, we were allowed to spend out of that over the next however many years till it's exhausted, to pay for things, so that we don't have to pay for the improvements out at the friend of the court, uh, through the general fund. Registered deeds automation, that's Bambi, she's always been very cooperative with that, but she's very limited on what she can spend it on, okay? That's the other big one. And then finally is the concealed pistols permit, there's about 65,000 in there, okay? And that's a fund that's, that's operated by Marty, okay? And she has to pay for new equipment to come out of that. So that'll give you an idea of those funds, and then it becomes an issue of, are any of those funds eligible to be used in the general fund, is there restrictions, all those kinds of things, okay?
Bruce, before you...
Yes?
On the parks, can that amount, is that the amount that's held, um, oh, Julie, help me out, is that the monies that are held in that?
Community foundation.
Community foundation? Is that, do you know? That 13,000?
I thought this was just the parks.
Julie, do you know?
No, no.
I don't think it is.
The community foundation is a lot less than that. It's not as much as that. Community foundation is small amount.
So that would be a...
It's $10,000. Yeah, but not that much.
That would be a fund balance at the end of the year, which is, I don't know what that would be, is that, Derek, you have any idea?
Yeah, that's, that's, they're, all their assets less their liabilities, I mean...
Is that, would that include like equipment that they have?
Equipment, any cash in the bank, it would include whatever's in the community foundation fund.
It's not pure cash.
It's not pure cash.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
Alright, then the, other points I wanted to make, going to page, well, this is all the way to the back, under communication with those charged with governance. That would be us.
Right.
And on page three, starts us towards the bottom, it says comments and recommendations, okay? And I want to go through these real quick, so you all know what Derek has done this past year. Now, we're not perfect yet, but we're getting closer. It says policies, and this is from the prior year. County does not currently have the following policies in place, and it indicates the status has been partially corrected. The board adopted a GASB 54 policy, okay, in early 2019. So we got that one taken care of. The two we've got to work on are the ACA-GFT banking and the conflict of interest policy, okay? And Derek has promised me that we're going to keep plugging away on that. Okay, then on the next page, uh, at the top, this would be page four, it says, "For non-union employee sick time payout is silent on whether or not these hours are paid out upon termination or retirement." Okay? The status is, we're in the process of updating that policy, but we've got to clarify that, Derek, am I correct?
Yeah, yes, essentially.
It's, it's got to be, the verbiage is vague, and we got to get that clarified to take care of that, for non-union employees. Uh, the uniform charts of account, Derek is working on that as we go, the state's come down with a new uniforms charts of account, and he's working on that as we go through the process. Uh, for instance, Heidi just retired over in the probate court?
Juvenile.
And she took care of all the financing and everything else. A new person's coming in, and I told Derek, "Go ahead and put all the new uniform charts of account," because right now, there's just like one big blob that all the expenses go into, and we're going to line it out and make line items and so on, that needs to be done, and with a new person, it'll be easy to do, because they won't know the old way.
Right.
Um, inmate trust account has been corrected out at the sheriff's office. The inmate trust from the prior year has been corrected. The payroll, uh, they were testing to make sure that, uh, weren't missing any information, that's all been corrected. Uh, page five, disbursements, uh, that's been corrected, uh, didn't have any late fees. And I've been trying to watch that, and I got on a couple people that didn't get things around in time, and told them the next time, it can either pay if they don't get it up to Carol on time. Credit cards has been corrected. Also, with the credit cards, the credit card company, now, correct me if I'm wrong in this, Derek, jacked up our limit that we can spend, you know how they'll say, "You're a wonderful person, now, now you've got 40,000 or 50,000 or whatever?" They jacked ours up, but we haven't changed it. We haven't changed our policy, is that correct, Derek?
I believe that's, that's what this is about.
Ken, is that right? So what we've got to decide is whether we're going to jack up the credit card limit, or whether we're going to write a letter to the credit card company and tell them, "We don't want that limit, jack it back down to where it was before." But the two have to match up.
Right.
Our policy has to match up with the credit card company. So you guys need to be thinking about, as commissioners, which way, which direction you want to go with it, okay? The travel policy is, uh, we've adopted that, that's, that's all taken care of. Inactive funds, this is all those little pots of money that Stephanie's got in her office. Now, my question to you is, the, the comments you're making that we need to wipe these things out, are most of those the delinquent tax, uh, the delinquent tax funds?
A lot of them are, and there's also, there's also special funds that I think you may not need either.
Right, there's a few of those. We got rid of some of those a few years back, if you remember. But the delinquent tax revolving funds go way back. Stephanie, would you explain to us why you do not want to get rid of those funds?
Because we have goo goo hardships on people who have taxes somewhat that far back, and they're making payments on those. So those have to be open to make payments.
So they're still making payments. And, and that comes from, not with so much with Stephanie, but from Gary. He worked his tail end off to try to work with people so they wouldn't lose their property, okay? And so they're still paying, and as they're still paying, these funds have to be open.
And I'm doing that as well.
And what, what the state requires is, they want only five funds, liquid tax revolving funds, open at one time, and, and actually, you only need them separated if you have debt outstanding, meaning if you borrow money to buy the liquid taxes. That's, that's the state law and rule. For the old ones, if that debt's paid off, you can get away with having what they call an umbrella fund or, or a tax revolving fund, it pretty much takes all those old ones and puts them into one fund, and then, you know, kind of like you have departments, or you have, you know, uh, an account, like tax receivable, you can, you can line it off being 2017, 2016. So you can still have it, but you kind of, you streamline, you're supposed to streamline and keep just the minimum funds that the state recommends.
Would, would you be willing to work with Stephanie on that? And Stephanie, I understand, it's your choice, you're the elected official, I understand that. But would you be willing to talk with Ken and see about...
It would take, um, fixing our program as well, because when the tax payment's made with BSNA, on the tax, delinquent tax program, you have to talk to each other ledger to the right account. So more than just...
Would you guys be willing at least to talk about it?
I'd do that for free, yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you.
I can show her what that looks like, and I know, I know it can work, because it works at a lot of other places. And maybe you two could do it gradually, base on some of the old ones each year, not that you've got to change the world in one, one year, but it works further.
Okay, and then in the trusted agency funds, this is prior year, uh, they include multiple funds had stale outstanding liabilities. funds had stale outstanding liabilities within them. Okay? And we recommend that they review those and get them cleaned up, right?
Right.
Get them off the books.
And what can happen with these is, as money comes in, this trust and agency fund, it's usually for the benefit of some other party. It's not county money to manage, it's usually other tax money for other people, or it could be bonds, court ponder, everything's. The money comes in, it goes into a liability until you get around to paying the money back out for restitution or something, and then you gotta take it out of that same place. What happens, though, is with all of these different liabilities, it seems that people don't always take it back out of where it originally went, somewhere else, so then things can get out of whack. So that's what we've gotta pluck out for and clean up when that happens. And it's, it's fairly common to all counties that this happens. You're not really paying attention to, "Okay, I know it went in here, now it's gotta get paid out, I gotta take it from there."
The next one that he had here highlighted was the long outstanding checks. I believe if I read this correctly, Ken, that's some checks that have been uncashed.
Right.
For, and I guess what is the period of time that we're looking at as far as those should or should not be off the books?
Well, if, if they're three years old or older, you can eschew them to the state, but the problem with that is you need to know who it was for and what it's going for, so you don't always have that info available. The state changed rules a few years ago. If it's, if it's a check that's under $25, you can just clear it and, and put it back in the general fund, like say, like what I have with the inmate account. They leave, and the inmate has $3 owed to them, and they're never coming back, and otherwise it would sit there forever. You can clear some of these things. But the other thing that you can try too is if people aren't taking it right, we can try to contact them and avoid the old and reissue the new one, and try to be more diligent about clearing these things.
We are doing that.
Because if they're old, the bank probably won't take them if they're sold.
Last year, we did a whole bunch of eschews.
Three years, anything under $25, just wipe off the book.
But some of the others, guys, it's the three-year mark.
Okay, so we did the long outstanding check?
Yeah.
Okay, the intrusion testing. The county has not had an intrusion test performed in 10 years for our I T. Can you explain what we mean by that?
What, what you need to do with that is, in this age of computers and all this stuff, you wanna make sure your different servers and systems are secure from outside hacking and different things to make, and usually you have your I T person, I T company, they can contact with someone to, to do these types of tests to make sure that...
Did you talk to Dave Holcomb? Because he's constantly doing stuff with security.
I thought, we, we have a checklist, and I know we went, one of our, my...
Derek?
Doug talked to him, and they talked in detail. David not done an intrusion test.
He hasn't done it in 10 years?
Right.
Okay. Is this something that is fairly easy to do?
I, I think so. He might be able to, or you might have to use a different I T company to do it, but it's, I think the value of it is always...
Is this a state requirement?
No. It's just...
A suggestion?
A suggestion for the betterment of internal controls, just because computers is...
Yep.
What's going on right now, and it's a weakness.
Okay.
And if you have, I don't say you have to do it every year, but maybe every two, three years, get it done.
Okay, and then, then it gets into accounts payable. It was noted during our review of accounts payable, but the amount recorded in ledger for accounts payable and expense did not agree to the actual amount paid to the vendor. We recommend the county review all accounts payable booking to ensure the amounts booked reflect the actual amount expended. What, what did you find there? What?
On one of the payable balances to a vendor, what was, what was recorded didn't match what would actually end up getting, got, getting paid in the end. I'm not sure what the, the dollar difference was, but, but what we're saying is the payable's gotta be...
So you, you went in and you took out some, you just grabbed something and looked at it and happened to find this mistake?
Right.
Okay. Can you tell, can you tell us specifically, can you find out for us specifically what the problem, what the issue was, so that we know and we can look?
Right. You can find a who and what for that one.
And respectfully, Ken, and I know you have a lot on your plate, but if you come in and you do something like this, and you find that, you should let us know right away.
Okay.
And then we can get right on it.
Okay.
I think, Mr. Chairman, for the benefit of all you folks, that's all I have. But I wanna go through all this with you commissioners. There's a lot of, and I know the bodies are boring, goodness gracious, as boring as they can be, but there's a lot of stuff in here that can answer a lot of questions we have taken through the years, and sometimes it doesn't. Like with the senior center, we know now what they're getting in and what they're spending on their buildings, and the difference that they're using for the other stuff. We haven't known that in the past. Okay? We don't, still don't know the cost of murders. Okay? The total cost, and we need to find that out. And these things in the back are things that Ken suggests to us that we need to change, and the things that have been corrected, I think, first of all, you see everything out to sheriff's department, it's been corrected, and that's a credit to the sheriff, and Derek getting together and working on things. And some of these other things have been corrected, and when Derek comes to us with stuff to take care of, a lot of times it comes from this, that we need to take care of. So it's not just something he dreamed up. Okay? Thank you.
Ruth?
How many years have this company, Anderson Tacman, been doing the audit?
I think we've been here six years.
Six years in a row?
Yep.
Is that okay?
Well, the next time we...
Do you have a contract for so many years, like three years?
Yeah, I think, I think we've got this the second year of a three-year contract run.
So next year it'll be up?
Right.
And we put it up for bid a year ago, didn't we, not, Derek?
Yeah.
And when it comes up to bid in another year, the things you need to think about, do you wanna keep the same outfit? Because then it's gonna be nine years. Do you wanna switch to a different outfit, even if they're more expensive? You're gonna have to think all that through.
But you said something before about...
I think it's good to change every six, nine years. Nothing against Ken and his firm, but I think you get too comfortable if you have the same outfit in here all the time, and that's just the nature of human beings.
My mom tells me that too, so.
I have, I have a feeling...
My mother tells me that.
I have, I have a feeling that, that Derek has contributed greatly to our successful audit.
For sure.
And I think that that should be brought out. I remember when I first started on the commissioners in 2013, we had, we had a couple of rough audits and learning curve and everything else, but I think that Ruth, that Derek has contributed greatly to the success of our audit. He's done a lot of work, and he's helped us out very positively. Thanks, Derek.
I think a lot, a lot of people, Marty and Stephanie also have been working on these things too, and, you know, it takes a village, and, you know, I, well, I don't get the point. I think overall, everybody's doing a really good job, and they're making progress, you know, and these, these things that we come up with, you know, they take it seriously, and they, they kinda work on them based on importance, and I'm, I'm pretty happy with the effort they put for us, so. Some people just sort of, eh, you know...
The final, final thing I wanna say, Mark, and I really mean this sincerely. We had this year a major screw-up on revenues, about 230,000 less, and you've heard why, because of this whole personal property tax mess-up from the state, and nobody knows what's going on, quite frankly. But our elected officials and our department heads brought us back expenses that were $293,000 less than the budget. And they, through their frugality and their good stewardship of money, they saved our bacon because of this revenue to the state. Okay? And I think they're to be commended for that. And the other thing I wanna say is, I think the medical care facility from four years ago where they're at, I think they've done a fantastic job out there, not just in making money, but their quality's gone up, they've now got money to put back into plant and equipment to fix the building up, and I think they're to be commended. And you've mentioned to me a couple times, you got outside outfits coming in and wanna buy them up, and the reason they wanna buy them up is because they're doing a well-oiled job, and it's a good outfit, and there's money there, and there's no way that I would ever vote to get rid of that medical care facility, some other private outfit. That, that's ours, and they take care of our people.
Yep. Well, I know, and I think Derek and I have talked about it in the, in the past, but the, you know, the number of items that need corrected there that we went over last have, have gone down, and a lot of that is because of Derek's efforts, but also because, you know, staff has looked at those items. And I know we probably had twice as many when I first came on the board as what we have, you know, in this report, as far as items to look at to fix. So, you know, I, I think we're headed in the right direction in that respect as well.
You know, see, the G A S B keeps making rules too all the time, you know? Deal with the pension one, and the whole tab, you know, and they've got more, they're, they're changing the trust funds for next year, so...
Some, some of it's a moving target, isn't it?
Right. And the chart of accounts we were talking about, that was supposed to be mandatory this year, but then the state put it off again. And I just told Derek, I, I think it's because they're finding that they can't fit everybody into one category, like every county and city, and, because that chart of accounts isn't just for counties, it's all the cities, the villages, the townships, you know, through the whole state, and they're on different softwares and different things. I think they're finding it's not, you know, going as, as easy as they thought. That's why this is the second time they've put it off. So there's a lot, yeah, there's a lot to do, and it just seems every year there's just more and more to do with this stuff.
Any other questions or comments for Ken?
Thank you for letting me have the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken, very much.
Derek, any questions?
They're really good questions, so.
Okay.
Ken, those two CDs that we had a year ago, you remember, we got, I got all bent out of shape about them, and you downgraded them. Did those go up in value at all this year, or are they still down about where they were?
No, I think it got a bit better this year.
A little bit, not much. Are we getting any interest off those yahoos? Or are they still basically nothing?
I'd have to pull it apart, I'm not sure.
Okay.
On those two specific ones. Overall, the county's earning interest.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And again, it's like the, the loss is what we call a realize, is you've gotta show market value, so it's not real until you do take them out and do something else. That's when it, you know, that's when you read, when you take it or something.
And when they cash out, they'll be worth 100,000. We're not, at the end of the day, we won't lose the money, we're just not getting any interest out of it. Okay.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Tim's not here, public safety. Sheriff, do you have anything for us?
I have my standard mantra when I come up.
Jail's full.
We are capacity, and today is day 10 of our overcrowding at the jail. We've notified the judges late last week that we were pressing that mark, they made an attempt to get them down, and we had some inmates go out and thought we were gonna be close to that. Next thing you know, we had four more come in immediately and fill those spots. And we've had other law enforcement agencies not happy with us because we placed restrictions on bringing people to jail, and they're sitting on multiple warrants that they need to make arrests on, and that's not happening. So this morning, at 8:01, when I ran the report, we were at 72 inmates, and we should be at 67. And one of the ongoing trends that, that we're seeing in the jail is the female population. It is bad. We've got 17 females currently incarcerated, and when the facility was built back in the early 70s, it was really built with a, with a thought process of maybe a maximum of nine females at any one point in time. And over the years, I saw that one of the female cells that we use, we didn't have that many females, and we were able to use that for some inmate workers, which was taking three spots out. But now with the 17 females, that puts us over our carrying capacity of actual cells designated for females. We've had to modify some issues in the jail about putting them in a different cell, and even at that, we're, we've got them overcrowded in one cell just simply to account for those females. So from a commissioner's standpoint, you know, we look at monies, you look at infrastructures. I've said this before, but Hillsdale County has been fortunate to maintain the amount of years that we have, having the smallest jail in southern Michigan, but we're bursting. We're bursting the seams. And when we sit down with commissioners this year and discuss budgets, it's not gonna be a fun conversation, because you look at the actual numbers of what we're spending in the jail for inmate meals, medical expenses, they are through the roof, just simply because of a bulging population. And then, then there's the infrastructure as a whole that, that has some issues. And I spoke with Randy last week in detail about some problems we're having. We've got some doors and things that are scheduled to be replaced, but ironically enough, we in the jail seem to find that, we always hear that, "Well, we're doing the renovation for the cop, can't do that. Now we're doing the renovation of the courthouse, we can't get to you there." And so that seems to be an ongoing problem of that jail. And with that said, I would welcome a commissioner tour again, once again, like I did with you folks when I took over office. I'd love to have you come back out and see what's happening in that facility and how we need some serious dedication time for that infrastructure. I still have a, I've got a door that comes in the entrance to the building, and I can't get a closure on it, and it was scheduled to be replaced two years ago, and the door's been there, but we just can't get it replaced. And this door in particular is a door that gets used 24/7. Unlike other buildings, we are in and out of that door all hours of day and night, and those are the kind of things that are happening in our jail facility, and I don't want this to, to fall on deaf ears to the commissioners. You've heard it from me before, but there, there needs to be some serious attention to that building and that facility. And again, I welcome the tour, and I leave that door open. You contact me, let me know when you'd like to come out, and I'll give you a personal one-on-one tour to the facility once you see it once again. But we're at capacity, so we've notified judges, and they will need to reduce that population today. We had a couple go to prison and a couple that were going out to a rehab center today in effort to alleviate that, but that is still not gonna get us below our threshold we need to be by the end of the day. So that's just information. Just a minute.
So female population continues to increase. What, what's causing that? What?
Society.
What are they being charged with, though?
You name it.
So it's not just one thing specifically?
Well, no, no, absolutely not. We can't categorize and say, "All the females are committing this." That, that's not the case at all.
Most of them aren't committing drug crimes. Most of them aren't drunk driving. Most of them aren't...
No. No. They're scattered all over the board. We have them all the way from not paying child support, which we didn't see traditionally many years ago, but we have them for that, we have them for drug offenses, we have them for assaultive offenses, we have them for drunk driving offenses. And we've got probation violations in which district court places them on probation, and if they violate that probation in any way, shape, or form, and it may be taking substances, then they're placed back in jail.
Are we seeing a lot of the same people, or are these all different people?
It would be an assumption on my behalf to tell you that. It's just, it's just that our society has changed so much the past 20 to 30 years It's just, it's just that our society has changed so much the past 20 to 30 years that we're seeing those females incarcerated at a higher rate than what we've ever seen before.
Also, Judge Lissney, you know, gave us a second quarter report and, you know, over time, over the last 10 years, drunk driving cases have decreased substantially. However, from the first quarter of this year to the second quarter, they increased dramatically. Is that normal? Is it because there's better weather and people are out more doing things or?
Again, you can look at statistics and try to assess something in society, why it is that we have higher substance abuses, why we have higher driving. And there's a lot of people who they hang their hat on in state government of making those assessments and trying to figure out how to combat that. I don't have the answer to that at all. I can just tell you what we're currently experiencing, these are the people that we have in custody there.
Thank you.
Ruth, do you have a question?
Well, my concern with all these females in the jail is where and what is happening to their kids? Because most of those females are young females, am I correct Sheriff Parker? And they have kids. And so where are their kids and who's taking care of their kids? That's not a question, you know, I'm just making a comment. I'm also wondering, you alluded a little bit to where their house, when you took them on a tour before, you had a section up in the front of the jail, when the jail was built, was supposed to be for females. And obviously that's full, I'm assuming, so maybe when we take the tour, we'll figure out where, I mean, where are you putting them, how many in one cell?
Well, right now we have five in one of the four man cells, which they have an extra bunk, which is not unheard of, we've been doing that for years, having a portable bunk on the floor, which ironically during last week's heat wave through our jail, we had numerous complaints from residents of the community whose children were in jail and was going to sue the county of Hillsville because you didn't have air conditioning in the jail. So, so you know, we experienced that all last week and they were having a fit because it was hot in our jail. And so some of those persons were actually sleeping on the floors, putting their bunk on the floor because it was cooler down there than what was sitting up in a bunk bed type style in that facility. Now, no, the good news, we did harvest some green beans last week from our inmate garden in the facility. So just again, I throw it out to you that we're always bulging, we're always pushing that envelope. As the saying goes, Hillsdale County has been frugal in many ways over the years and it's been an asset that we've been able to not expand our jail over the past 20 years. But there will come this pushing point when you're going to need to make a solid decision to move toward expanding that facility unless you have a great social program to move forward a path in the future to eliminate crime problems in our communities.
And remember commissioners, if that day comes and if the voters approve it, that not only will you have a new jail, bigger jail, but you will have higher expenses, more electricity costs, more heating costs, you're going to have to have more guards, you're going to have to have more food, so all those incidentals are going to go up in the budget. So it won't just be strictly a bond issue, it will also be a hit to the general fund when that time comes.
That operating cost will up some standard.
Sheriff, I was going to ask you or Chris, and I see Chris left, but I had an email, something about there's a package of bills and I'm a little bit unclear, but I guess there's some bills in Lansing that are talking about doing away with the current bond system and going to a personal recoup.
Well, it's been a trend that's been moving nationally for about two years now. And the theme is simply enough, why are we keeping people incarcerated in our facilities, our local jails specifically, when they're only charged with a crime in our system of government, they're presumed to be innocent until proven guilty in a court of law? Why are we keeping them locked up as opposed to processing them in and kicking them back out and waiting until their court dates appear? And then I don't have the stat to me this morning to follow up with that as how many unsentenced people we have currently in Hillsdale County jail versus those that are sentenced. I know that a couple of months ago, when I did have that stat directly in front of me, we were running somewhere around upwards of 40% of those that were in the facility were unsentenced. Now, mind you, this last past quarter, we have had a highest amount that I have ever seen since I have worked for the county of Hillsdale of those persons who were facing life or close to life in prison charges. And we're talking about homicides, deaths involving motor vehicles that was being charged at the homicide rate, sexual assaults that were going to be a potential life imprisonment. We had some serious people and we even housing an inmate from Lenoir County who has that type of charge on him because of troubles back in their facility. And we work sometimes with other jails along those lines that when you look at those persons who are unsentenced, the natural reaction for most people is, well, we need to get them out of there, they're not sentenced, they need to be gone. But there are some people who, quite frankly, they're dangerous. They need to be in the facility to protect our community and the judges take that into account when they set those bonds. Then we look back at what we attempted to do with having tether programs in place so that if we had somebody who had questionable behaviors, what they've been doing or not doing, or where they should or shouldn't go, we implemented a tether program that's been utilized, but again, that's still at the judge's discretion to put them on a tether whether or not they do so.
Well, I know in the email, it indicated that some of the states that have gone to such a program, they have actually seen an uptick in crime.
In their communities?
Yes.
Because those people are back out in the streets and they're doing what they do.
Right.
Just like I alluded to earlier, that, you know, we tried to bring those numbers down before the weekend came, at the immediately, as soon as we started to loosen some of the restrictions, the floodgates just opened. I mean, and we've had the state police calling us daily to want to know when we're opening back up because they've got a bunch of warrants they need to serve.
Ruth?
Well, serving on that criminal justice policy commission, we had a hearing on this. A guy came in, a bail bondsman, and I've never had anybody come before a hearing that was more incompetent than this guy, okay? He wasn't good. But what the sheriff said is right, New Jersey has seen it, Alaska has seen it, they get away with bail, so everybody just got turned loose and the crime skyrocketed. In fact, Alaska has gone back, put bail back in again. They've said, we've had enough. So it is not a cure-all. And like it or not, judges have to have discretion about who to put in and who to put out and so on and so forth. And quite frankly, most of the judges I've talked to over the years have said, if there's a question in my mind, I'm going to put them in jail because I'm not going to put the public in danger. And how can you fault somebody for that?
And one of the problems that we've seen locally in our communities is that there has been a high substance abuse and let's make something clear here, it's not been heroin. The substance abuse in our community is methamphetamines and crystal meth. And so then now the judge has them on that charge and quite frankly, the communication I've had with the judges is, I'm not inclined to let this one out because as soon as I do, they're going to get right back into meth. And they can't control them and then it goes back to the comment that Commissioner Brown does, what about the families and the children? Well, they're not being taken care of properly because the parents are doing meth. And so it's a bad revolving circle in there. There's this point of, this is why we in our local communities have correctional facilities, they need to have some people locked up.
Which gets us to the point, about a year ago, we joined, if you remember, a lawsuit against the opioid manufacturers. Those suits are starting to be settled, a couple in Oklahoma were settled, another one is before the, is being tried in court. Ours is in Ohio. But that, if we end up getting a settlement and if we end up getting that money, we need to really be seriously thinking about using that money to address some of the issues the sheriff is bringing up in terms of dealing with these folks. Because a lot of this is drug driven, maybe not just opioids, other drugs, but we need to put it towards that. And there's a lot of places, whether it's the childcare fund to take care of the kids when the parents are govers and druggies, whether it's, you know, treatment, whatever it might be, but that's where that money should go and not just be spent willy-nilly, at least in my opinion.
The problem is, is that these kids are getting off to a really, really bad start. And my concern is in 10 or 15 years, when these kids are 15 years old and they're in school, or, you know, they're going to be in jail and on meth. Because that's what they, that's how they were raised. They're getting off to a really bad start and they're going to be in crime and they're, this is not a good look for Hillsdale in the future.
Not in Hillsdale.
If it's any consolation Ruth, Hillsdale is not a lone ranger on this one.
I understand that, but we're concerned about Hillsdale. Not, you know, we're concerned about everybody, but it's our responsibility right now to be, to be looking at Hillsdale.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you. I overlooked my own note, I would like a motion to put the audit on file.
Support.
Moving in support, any comments or questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The 2018 audit will be put on file. Thank you. And, oh, before I forget, I brought it up, Ruth, to your question about the children, in June, there was four removed, according to my report from DHS, DHHS. But overall, the total cases of foster care, in other words, kids that had to be removed and placed, from June of 2018 to June of 2019, was down from 140 down to 98. So we've improved by 52, or, excuse me, 42. So we're headed in the right direction and actually being below 100 total cases in foster care, that's the lowest it's been in a long time.
I recognize that.
Yeah, and then adult service cases were still up there at 203 through DHHS. And some of those, I'm sure, are connected to some of the adults that are incarcerated in one way, shape or form. But, you know, those are still some pretty staggering numbers for a small county, so. Anyways, moving right along, Julie?
I see Randy's here. Did you want to come up for anything, just?
You're fine.
Okay, alright, I wasn't sure, I just thought since I saw you out there. Randy did call me this morning and let me know that the dump trailer that he talked about at the last meeting was sold yesterday for an astounding large amount of $2,800, which was very surprising actually. So we had multiple bidders on that and so we did really well on that. So we did a good job of attracting people, you know, to that sale.
Can I interrupt just a second?
Sure.
After our last meeting, I talked to Derek about this whole issue of the fund of, for scrap metal and so on and so forth. There is no scrap metal fund. There is a fund into which revenues coming back to the county goes in. Now, there's an amount of money that's gone in there that's from scrap metal, but there's also money from others. And that fund is part of the revenues that we adopted in our budget. I think it was about $6,000, Derek, okay? So when Randy talked about it, he misconstrued what's there and everything, okay? There is no scrap metal fund. So what we did is we took the cost of this air conditioner and were applying it to his 265 fund. And at the end of the year, if it's in deficit, we'll adjust that towards the end of the year. You know, the other thing that happened was I got a bill back from the county that Randy had sent him, apparently for the first air conditioner. And I got that back and apparently we paid the company, whoever we got the stuff from, and then he sent them a bill, they can't pay that bill, they can't pay for that. And I may be stepping on your toes, I'm sorry.
It's just a part of accounting, it's just a part of accounting process, so he has to bill them, but it wasn't because he expected them to pay for it.
So they sent me that bill back, they said, what are we supposed to do with this? And I said, well, you shouldn't even handle it. So I brought it in, gave it to Derek and that's taken care of. But I just wanted you to understand, there is no accounts for scrap metal, scrap metal account, and there's not like there's additional money coming in, there was $6,000 set aside and that account is just under $6 in it now, Derek?
Yes, but you would receive the sale of the trailer into that too, so that you would have over $8,000.
So that will be over that amount, so that will be quote unquote, extra revenue that we hadn't planned on. So that revenue can be taken, I mean, you can take anything you want, spend on it, but that revenue will be above so we could expense that back to the air conditioner thing or the trailer or whatever it is we're talking about, so, okay, I'm sorry.
Alright, that's fine. I attended the parks meeting a couple weeks ago and we did have Harmony and another DALL line, her name's escaping me right now, come in, Harmony's from MSU Extension, the other DALL is from actually the DNR that works on the grant funding for the parks. So they made a presentation about what's available and how to apply for those things and we would actually be working with this lady in the grant department through the DNR. And so we're starting to put things together to work on the five-year plan. We're going to coordinate that with the planning commission, which was another meeting that I attended because we have to redo the master plan. Has to be either updated or totally redone and I'm not sure which it is, so we've got to check on that in 2020.
You can just, they can just update it, don't they, don't they just update the master plan?
I thought at some point you have to totally rewrite it, but we did, I thought that they did that in 2015, so I think this is just an update. But in so many years, I guess, in increments.
The Hillsdale County planning commissions?
Yeah.
In 15, in 15, we just updated it.
Okay.
We didn't rewrite it, and the person who did it was Shelby Berlou at MSU Extension. I don't think she's.
She's not there anymore.
She's not there anymore, but she's the one that did it and we just updated it.
So we're going to have to find out about that, we're working on that. The other, I went to the road commission meeting, you know, they're obviously working on a lot of different repairs, but their main thing right now, one of the main things they're working on besides roads is that Lake Pleasant Bridge repair. And that's actually going to start work on August 1st and should be done by Lake Pleasant Road, which is at Lake Bel Air, that bridge there. Be done by October 1st, so that's in your district, Bruce.
It's going to be done by when?
October 1st, they expect.
So you have to detour?
So you're going to have to be detouring and going around that area because there's nowhere to get around there.
Well, I saw Burt Reynolds, where were we at? It was Burt Reynolds, oh, it was up at Whitehouse Gate, it was Burt Reynolds night. And in between innings, they showed where, if you remember, he used to drive cars pretty fast and so on, and he took a car and went up a ramp and went over completely. So could we put a ramp out there so we don't have to detour or we could just?
I've got another meeting on Thursday, Ruth, and I can certainly bring that idea up. I don't think the sheriff would be for that. What some insurance people might be, I don't know, I don't know. The other, I'll say more or less more interesting thing I've done the last two weeks is I, Michigan Works is bringing a lot of, you know, they consolidated the three groups, the three Michigan Works to become Michigan Works Southeast three years ago. And they've been outsourcing all their accounting and benefits and blah, blah, blah to another Michigan Works group out of the metro area. And they're bringing a lot of stuff in-house now to save money. And one of the things they're doing, bringing in is the benefits, which is, you know, something we're working on. And so I had to score 10 different companies, RFPs, on health benefits. And then we interviewed four of them yesterday in Jackson, at the Jackson office, and I'll be going back on Wednesday to do another one. And then also, we're going to interview three companies on retirement benefits and one of them is MERS. I thought of you, Bruce. And I have already expressed our displeasure on a personal level in our company with MERS. So it'll be interesting. So I may see MERS online today if you want to be asked of any questions.
I wouldn't put you in that position.
Other than that?
But that was a really good thing that you did though, Julie.
Yeah, it was, that's a lot of work.
That was a lot of work, right. And it was good that Julie did that.
But because they needed a commissioner too to be, you know, they need somebody from the board to be one of the interviewers because the other people, you know, they work for Michigan Works.
Right.
And so.
That was really good that you did that.
I hadn't, you know, I hadn't volunteered for stuff like that before, but, so I'm learning a lot too, which is interesting. So it might be information that can help us, I have a lot of requests for proposals on benefits, so it may be something that we want to look over, but anyways.
Okay, so while Julie's on her report, what about that list of stuff that I sent you that from last week when we were walking around in here? Like the sign, did you get the email that I sent you?
Yes.
Like the sign, the shades?
That's all being worked on.
Okay, okay.
It's stuff that we have to fit in, you know, between all the other stuff, just as was alluded to earlier.
Right, right.
But the one shade thing, that's being handled today.
That has to be, that has to be done like right now, but then the rest of the things just as you can work them in.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Good.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Bruce?
Well, first thing I want to mention to you, Lifeways is doing something that's really, I think, pretty spiffy. They've created key performance indicators, all right, for all their employees, and they're also extending it to their contractors. But for instance, Medicaid, one of the performance indicators, Medicaid applications are completed within 48 hours of contact 95% of the time. Another one, Lifeways is within 5% of the MSHN smoothing plan. And then they take their employees and they look at how many of their employees are completing none of these performance indicators, one of them, two, three, four, or five. And if they get five, that's 100%. In the first quarter of '19, January, February, and March, they started measuring this. And there were 71% of their employees were completing four or five of these indicators, okay? In the second quarter, April, May, and June, that went up to 82%, okay? You measure it, and people start paying attention to it. And it took a lot, it took a private company to come in, it took a lot of work to get these key performance indicators put together, okay? And it's taken a lot more work to try to get the contractors, the people that run their homes and all this kind of stuff, to get them involved in it, okay? But it's bearing some pretty good results. So just food for thought down the road if we want to look at anything. It's kind of like what medical care did. Then, the last meeting, I mentioned to you that we did not have the stuff from MERS that we were supposed to have, and we did have it. It was in the treasurer's office, I guess. But the couple of things I wanted to mention to you is, if we want to get to 100% funding ratio for our pension plan within 10 years, we're going to have to go from paying $190,000 a year to $358,000 every year, okay? And that's assuming we continue to earn the interest rate. So that's about a $200,000 increase.
Is it 7.75 or...
That is based upon their latest, which is 7.35.
Okay.
Okay? Now, if we go to a 5.75% return on investments, we're 5.8 million in the hole, okay? As opposed to 3.6. So every percent is roughly a million bucks. You can look at it that way. And then they gave you a very nice phase-in plan here, and I believe the state requirements are we have to phase in over 20 years. Now, MERS uses a 30-year-long UAAL, and I don't think we're going to be allowed to do that in the future. I think we're going to have to do it after 20. So just things to keep in mind. And Derek has gotten questions in. Derek, can you come up and tell us where we're at with the RFP for the actuaries and let us know?
Yeah, so I sent, have sent out the RFP. Quite a few different firms have looked at it, downloaded it, opened it. You know, it's all electronic now. And we have one firm ask questions, which I will respond to. I have to respond to the questions per the guidelines I put in the RFP by the 24th. I think I got those answers around, so I'll be probably submitting those today. And then I think they have until August 2nd to give their official proposal. So that's just the timeframe.
So hopefully by, now, August 2nd, they got to submit to us, and then by when are we going to select someone?
We didn't specify. We have the right to not select anyone.
So I'm going to be gone for the meeting on the 13th. I'm leaving on the 7th. So I'll have through the 6th. Do you want me to sit down with him and go through and at least present what I think my recommendation would be, our recommendation would be?
I think if you went through it with Derek, Derek could certainly bring it to us on the 13th.
Okay. Is that all right?
Yes.
Now, I'm going to try to call in. I don't know, California, we may have an earthquake, and, you know, I may be buried in the innards of the earth.
Yeah, I don't know. Phone signals over the Rockies sometimes is bad, too.
But, okay, we'll do that then, Derek. We'll get right on that as soon as you get everything in, okay? And this executive summary, Derek has to send in a report to the state every year on where we're at with our pension. What he sent the state is that we're funded at 57%, which is actually where we are based on market value. That would cause us to be put into the bad boy category. But there's a second thing that says, "And we also have to be spending at least 10% of our general fund revenue."
Right.
And 10% of our general revenue fund, general fund revenue is about 1.2 million. We're not spending anywhere near that. And it's an "and," so they both have to occur. So that second one is keeping us out of the bad boy category, keeping the state out of our hair, okay? But 57% is not good, and it's heading in the wrong direction.
I think, so just talking with Ken and piecing some things together, I think one of the reasons why that second category we're not likely to ever hit is because we only have a small portion of our employee base that is in MERS. I think when these, when that category is set by the state, they're kind of looking at counties or entities where all of their employees are in MERS. So I think that's one of the reasons why we're so far underneath that category.
Derek, do you know what percent? I mean, MERS is saying 7.3, 7.5, or what Bruce said. What, what percent are we actually, like, in 2018, what was our actual return?
Were we actually returned?
Yeah.
We actually lost money in '18. We didn't return anything, so.
Okay.
And then Ken kind of alluded to that a little bit. You know, the first quarter of this year, we had a pretty sizable gain. We do get quarterly reports that tell us our actual gains and losses in each quarter. I can start to screen those.
Trying to get those, and do you copy that one?
Which is the reason commissioner gains, that they tend to look at this stuff over a five-year period, so that you can kind of get a better sense. But if you go back 10 years and come forward, I believe the number I saw is about 5.25%, 5.5% is what the average gain has been over the last 10 years. That's a long way from 7.35.
Or 8, you know?
Or 8.
Which is what they were telling us for years. Okay, thank you.
Okay. I attended the med control meeting, and they handed out for June, or for May and for June guns. I'm not sure that I understand all of it. I'll be the first to admit, but it was brought up at that meeting about IVs, when they go to put people and stick them in and everything, and there's about a 10% error rate. And they said, "We have no idea." Dr. Brock has been looking for some kind of a standard for that around the country of what's an appropriate miss rate and so on, and he hasn't been able to find anything. But he mentioned that that might be a good educational thing to try to work to bring that rate down some if we can, to work with the ambulance services, which is one of the functions of the med control, to get a lower miss rate on the IVs, which brought me back to, go ahead.
I was going to say, so that 10% is by our EMTs and first responders and...
Right.
Ah, okay.
Okay, that's the, they pick somebody up and they need something. I had a kid that broke his leg going over a hurdle up to Stockbridge years ago, and they picked him up and hauled him down to Jackson, and they put pain medication, they stuck an IV in him, and took him all the way down, and I rode with him in the ambulance. And I kept saying, "Is it getting any better, Dan? Is it getting any better?" And he said, "No, it still hurts like crazy. It's killing me." And he just gritted his teeth and everything, and well, we got to full hospital, and they never got the IV into his vein. So they put the IV into his vein at the hospital, got it in, and he was taken care of right away. So it can be pretty important.
Yep.
So the other thing that was talked about at the med control meeting, and it wasn't brought up in an accusatory way or anything else, was the issue of transfers out of the hospital. And Dr. Brock suggested that there be a meeting with the ambulance services and with the hospital and with commissioner. And I'm kind of the opinion, I think Julie and I should be able to work with the ambulance services first and talk to them. I talked to Dave Slufka after the fact, after it was over with, and I think we should be able to sit down first before the hospital comes in and get this contract taken care of. We've got the stuff back from Thompson. Julie got it, I got it. She's going to send it out to all the ambulance services, and then we're going to have another meeting with them to see, try to iron out more of the differences. Taxable value, I talked about that. I believe we're all set. That's the personal property tax that was screwed up. The state is screwed up, so I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions for Bruce? Okay. Ruth, you're up.
On your email this morning at about 9 o'clock, I sent you the senior center board app. So please be looking for particularly men that are good in finance and that are good in building and grounds, and hand those apps out. Senior Center needs some new board members, needs to fill some spaces on their board. So be thinking about that when you're out in your district. The senior center is not having a board meeting this month, because it's July, it's summer. Also, Human Services Network does not meet in July. But senior center is having a finance committee meeting today at 4:00, and I got on the finance committee, so I'm going to that meeting today. One thing I want to announce for people in Ward, people that live in Ward II in the city of Hillsdale, I've been trying to get out and talk about this over the weekend. Ward II in the city of Hillsdale, don't vote yet. If you have an absentee ballot, don't vote yet. A lot of people are not aware that Sally Kinney filed as a write-in. Over the weekend, I was out talking to a lot of different people, and people said we had no idea that she wrote in and that she's even running her on the ballot, so they would have voted and not even known that they could have write her in. Also, the deadline on that election is this Friday at 4:00. So someone else could still file this week, this week, by Friday at 4:00, and I think someone might. So, you know, again, don't vote yet. If you have an absentee ballot, you might want to wait and see if somebody else files and who that person is after this week. But Sally Kinney was on city council way back when I was on, when I was on city council, and I know her well. And I talked to her on the phone last night for a little while, and she did file, and I'm glad she filed. It was good of her to file. Ward II has, that's my home Ward, I've lived there for 30 years. Ward II has Will Morrissey as our representative on city council right now, and he is very, very good. But we've had an empty seat in Ward II for a really long time. So the longer, the more representation that we can have, the better. And that's my report. Unless there's any questions, that's all I have right now.
Any questions for Ruth?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I believe there was another filing, too, Commissioner Brown.
Who filed?
I don't know. I haven't got the paperwork out.
Okay, I heard that somebody else was going to file.
So we got two filings.
Good. That's really, really good. I'm all for that.
Can you add another comment?
Yes, Carl Albright came in when I was in Derek's office, and, you know, we lease two cars for the sheriff's department every year in our budget. And those, the percent interest we were paying was like down around 1% or 2% was a good deal. Well, all of a sudden, Carl discovered it's now up to 6.5%, which is a big chunk of change in interest we're paying. So we may want to take a look at next year, when we get the two cars, at leasing them from Enterprise and putting those in service so we get out of paying the interest. That interest payment's coming over three years, it'll come to be about $15,000. That's a pretty good chunk of change. Either that, or we may want to look at pan form total, flat out, which I don't know if we got the money in the budget to do that. So be thinking about that in the back of your head, which direction you might want to go.
Thank you. I forgot about that. Carl mentioned it to me, that he'd spotted that. That's a huge change. After the last, so it was Wednesday following the last meeting, whatever the date was, we had a emergency management drill, a fairly realistic drill with measles. And it was put on by emergency management. I'm going to finish reading this, and then I'll leave it in the office for anybody to read. I'll leave it on the desk. I'm not through with it, but I will put it in here as soon as I am. It's actually, Doug works with the emergency management and homeland security division of the Michigan State Police. And so it was kind of a joint effort to put on this drill, and the health department was part of this drill as well, since the scenario, if you will, was measles. And actually, Hillsdale County, unfortunately, is one of the higher ones in the southern tier of counties with waivers for vaccination of children. And, of course, that's not just children, because those children eventually become adults, and they're susceptible to a measles epidemic, if you will. And what happened was, in this particular scenario, a Hillsdale College student returned from spring break, was feeling poorly, and went down to the hospital, and lo and behold, had the measles. And next thing you knew, there was four individuals from Hillsdale College that had contracted the measles. Unfortunately, a couple of those went to Branch County, to Promedica, to get checked out, and a couple went to Hillsdale Hospital. So next thing you know, we have two counties exposed. The long and short of it is, is we had, we talked about some, you know, how do we handle this? And, you know, how do you control such an outbreak? Well, the way this scenario, and there's different breaks as you're going through this scenario, and what I mean by breaks is there's segments that, here's what has happened, now let's deal with it, and then you go into the next segment. Well, lo and behold, next thing we know, we have 30,000 residents in the two counties that have been exposed and have measles. You know, so you've got, just short of an epidemic. And oddly enough, the chairman of the board is the highest elected official, so I've got a phone right there in front of me, and I'm supposed to call the state and the governor and, hey, we need help, you know? We've got an epidemic, you know? So part of the reason for these drills is so that the players around the table, such as the sheriff and the health department, and we even had a couple people there from Hillsdale College, since the scenario kind of developed from that aspect. And they addressed some of the plans they have in place already currently of basically restricting students to their dorms and then food services, providing meals to the dorms themselves. Now, that doesn't necessarily take away the exposure, because you've got students that live outside of the dorms or off campus. So, you know, and of course, I posed the question, and I don't remember if Jim Cook, he kind of is the emergency management for the three counties through the health department, and he works with Doug on a lot of these type of scenarios. I don't remember if it was him or the lieutenant from the state police. The question I posed is, can we take individuals that we know, you know, can we quarantine them? Can we? And yes, we can, but there's a process, and it has to be appealed through circuit court, and it gets expedited in a situation like this. But, you know, once you establish a quarantine zone and those affected people are, then you become, you, the county or the state, becomes responsible for their well-being as far as food and shelter and so on. So, you know, there's just a lot of things that get talked about. So, you know, there's just a lot of things that get talked about on these, and we probably spent two and a half hours kicking different things around. But it helps prepare us for the inevitable, should it happen. And, you know, it is interesting to sit through some of these. Childcare fund, and I've, I'm not sure if I forwarded it to everybody. I know Jennifer Whitney out at DHHS forwarded it to Derek and myself. I since forwarded it to you, Bruce. As of October 1st, 2019, the state will start billing us, instead of us paying the whole thing and then waiting for our half back. Now, with that said, she's been directed, and I believe Derek's got communication on it as well, I believe, is that funding-wise, we need to still budget, just like we've been doing. Now, that may change going forward, and in her email, it says that until the central office directs otherwise, we've got to continue budgeting for it. On an upside though, even though we've got it budgeted for, we will not, after October 1st, we will not be sending money expecting our 50% back.
Right.
We'll be paying only what's billed. Go ahead.
However...
Yes.
You are going to have to watch the state like a hawk, because they're not going to establish what the total cost is, and if things are screwed up or something isn't working right, they aren't going to care, and they'll send us back a bill. So we have to pay even closer attention to what's going on as far as what the bills are, or we'll end up sending them money that we shouldn't be sending them.
That's very correct. It's, it's going to be more vigilant on, on us and Derek both to watch those.
Well, and it's got to be primarily, it's got to be probate court.
Yep.
They're the ones that have to really hawk that baby, and watch everything that's coming in and be able to match it up. And if they can't match it up, then they need to tell us and put an end to it.
Well...
So I will make a point of stocking by and...
Well, that, I think, if I'm not mistaken, Jessica's going to be taking over when Heidi leaves the middle of August. And I think it's imperative that, you know...
August 1st?
Was it August 1st? Okay.
Please, so?
I thought it was 15th, but in any event, whenever Heidi leaves, Jessica's taking over. But we need to get Jessica to really hound dog that if we can, because it's going to be imperative to watch those. Now, with that said, there's always going to be a lag in any system, so even after October 1st, we're going to be getting some bills basically out of the old system. So...
I think you'll probably find that the state will be much more efficient about sending us a bill than they are about sending us money.
Oh, I would, I would agree with that.
Everybody, everybody's like that, everything's like that, not just the state.
The medical care facility, there was mentioned earlier how they've just had amazing, and I'm recognizing these phone numbers from these companies more and more, so that I don't even answer them. I had one the other day that I recognized, and yes, they're, they're after it because it's making money. But there is no way I'm going to even entertain them to come talk to us. We are currently sitting at five-star rating overall. The health inspection has a four-star, the quality measures is five-star, staffing is four-star, and then they've got a separate category for RM staffing, that's four-star. Terry...
Astorline?
Astorline. Goes through this report with us when we have our meetings out there, and some of these quality assurance measures. It's a moving target, because he said some of them are changing from quarter to quarter, but it's, it's the system we deal with, and it's, you know, they constantly try to improve on them. In most categories, we are actually above their, their baseline, so to speak. So we've got some fudge room, even if the standards fluctuate. So, they're just, they're really standing on top of their quality assurance, and they're very, you know, in tune with keeping that five-star rating. Kristy went over the, the financial report, and something that she made note of was the accounts receivable over 120 days was, was only $6,792.91. In her time there, that's the lowest it's ever been. And, you know, I think that's a credit to all of them out there for staying on top of that. The Medicaid days, the goal, of course, if we're looking at the, you know, to July, they should be at least 50% towards their goal of 100%. And they're at 54.5, so they're still running ahead of goal as far as meeting that Medicaid number of days. So that's, that's good news there. Seems like I had something else in my stack here, but I don't see it. The other thing I wanted to share with you is Bob Gadfrey and Marilyn will be here at the next meeting, August 13th, to go over the park funding, and explain, or better educate us as to how those monies come in, go out. I asked him to bring us some handouts, so that we can better understand where the revenue is going, from the rental of that building, or the rental of the house, what those monies are being used for currently. So they're going to hopefully enlighten us. Go ahead.
In that regard, the last meeting, I read out of their audit statement, if you remember, a statement that said they had two, it was about $2.7 million in the bank, okay? And that's what it said. I read it.
Yep.
And Bob called me, because somebody else who was watching us on, whatever they were watching us on, called him, "You got that much money," and so on and so forth. And Bob said, "We don't have that much money," and so on. And I said, "Bob," and I read it to him, and I said, "That's what it says." And through the conversation, he pointed out that what they actually have is about $700,000 cash in the bank. And I said, "Well, then your auditor needs to put in a sentence right after that sentence that they had, that only $700,000 of this is available," because there was a million that had to be put back into state stuff and everything else. And he said, "Well, the auditor made us do it that way." And I said, "Well, you need to tell your auditor to make it simple, so an idiot like me can understand it." And I said, "Put a sentence in after that, if they got to have that sentence in there that says only $700,000 of this is actual fund balance." And I said, "Then even I can understand it." So I just wanted to mention that on YouTube, okay? Or wherever we're at. And, so they don't have that huge amount of money, but I think their auditor did not do a good job of explaining it. And I think the sentence that's in there is, could be very misleading to the average person.
It's interesting that you told him that, because I told him the exact same thing, that there needed to be a footnote in there that some of those funds were already committed.
In specific, just, just tell the general, I mean, you guys, we went through an audit report today, is it boring or what? Okay?
Yeah.
But the average person, they don't understand all that garbage, so make it simple. $700,000 is the cash balance they had to work with. And then, everybody can understand it. It doesn't have to be complicated.
Well, and I think it needed to be indicated in there, at least my conversation with him, because he called me as well, that the lion's share of that $700,000 was M dot related dollars, so they can't be spent at the park.
That's the lion's share of the 2.7 million.
Okay.
The $700,000 is actually their money that they have, that they're carrying forward as the fund balance.
Okay.
The other 2 million was...
Okay, okay.
Basically what you just described.
But that, you know, that needs to be in there, because it, it helps any of us to understand that those monies are specific, you know?
Break it apart and make it plain.
The KISS theory. Okay, that's all I have, unless there's a question or two.
So, the wage study is the next meeting also, right? August 13th?
That is correct.
So I need to still get some stuff to you and I, don't I? Okay.
Now, you guys meet, we meet, at 9:00 in the morning.
Yes.
What time will it be in California?
Six o'clock.
No kidding?
(laughing)
Okay. Well, that wouldn't be all bad, because Kevin and Beth can sleep, I'll go outside in whoever we're at. I go on the street, I might get mugged, but I'll go outside, so I can spend two hours with you guys and get my day started. What a lovely way to start my day.
I've done it several times. Very enjoyable.
I bet. Felt like a root canal.
That brings us back up to public conduct.
Oh, yeah.
Penny's before you are.
No.
No? You're good, Penny?
Sure.
Just, just more meetings.
Oh, okay. New topic, or are we beating the same horse?
No, we got a couple of them.
All right.
Oh, it's a challenge up here on this board. First, I, I'd like to say that, you know, Ruth's got, on the 31st, you got that, was it Lifeways, right? And that's, where?
Rocker App.
Rocker App. And, and I still say it's a great way to try to get more, you know, people to come in, try to see if maybe one of the commissioners might even come in, if people might want to be interested in talking to. The other was to try to go back a little bit, just on what I did say earlier today, and I was looking forward to, is trying to find an answer that may exist someplace in the MCLs on the, you know, the persons who's running for a position that needs to acknowledge, that they need to resign their position prior to getting into another elected position versus being appointed, and, you know, so that we can not have this troublesome issue, I guess, in the future, so it'll put a stop to it.
There's, under current law in the state of Michigan, and this is going to have to be done at the state level, there is nothing to prevent anybody from running. It doesn't matter. It's up to the citizens to decide in the election if they want to accept them or not. And once they're in office, then it's the responsibility of the governing body, which is us, to do just what we've done and turn it over, and the law is very specific. The only people who can make that determination of conflict of interest is the local prosecuting attorney, and then the AG's office. And if those two won't do anything, then there isn't anything that anybody else can do. That's current law in the state of Michigan. So if you want that changed, you don't need to be talking to us. You need to be talking to the boys up in Lansing.
Well explained, that's, that's, that's pretty good. I think there's another one now that can be thrown in there. You know, we can do a matter of public opinion as well. And that'd be quite, you know, the way that I think it's start. I've already kind of embarked on that issue, and I think I've alerted a few more people to that situation, and, but not trying to, you know, because I don't know the entirety of everything that Tim's been involved in. I think it's okay, you know, to get the public involved, a great deal more, and then see where that goes. But again, I don't think there was anything other than, you got me, Bruce. Because I was going to give you something, and I can't remember it, so I guess I'm going to have to say thank you. That was pretty good, though.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Steph, did you have anything?
No.
Okay. Additional business, Ruth?
Up, sir.
Ruth? Julie?
Just remember to vote. Two weeks, August 6th, for the 911 renewal, some of the sources of funding we have for Hillsdale County, so please vote.
I saw a bumper sticker once that said, "Don't vote." It just encourages them.
All right, with that, we stand adjourned. Thank you. Very good.
They put this in Tim's box.
Yeah.
This is for Tim, too. And I'll put these in office.
It's been real.
Say these are...
I see, it's been real.
Yeah, it has. It has. Okay.
See you tomorrow at Lifeways, please.
Yep.
Okay, man.
I wasn't gonna...
No.
Well...
Just a minute.